Good evening. Welcome to the December 16th regular meeting of the Dyna School Board. We do have a quorum this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We had a regular meeting on November 18th. And a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 18th. Any addition or corrections to those minutes as written?
I sent one correction to Sarah which has already been placed in the minutes, so no actual corrections.
Thank you, Lonnie. Additional corrections? Sign then, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Any requests for hearings from the audience? Thank you, Sarah. Rick, could you please walk us through tonight's agenda before we move on to recognitions?
I will do that. Would like to make the community and the public aware that the board did meet in a work session just prior to tonight's meeting. That was the only meeting since the regular meeting. At that meeting, they, we, help me here. Hold on.
Technical glitches.
But I will talk a little bit about the world that we were in. The board met, we had a community survey that was completed by formerly Decision Resources, a longtime polling service of the school district and the city. Gave us a quick overview of the work of the district. The community, again, continues to appreciate and value the education that's offered here. They put a high priority on our teachers and the quality of work they do in the classroom. And they also appreciate the strategic direction we're headed as a school district. Following that, we did hear from Chad Schmidt. Chad is our Director of Research and Evaluation, gave an overview of the Minnesota Student Survey results. It's a self-reporting survey that our students in grades five, six, eight, no, five, eight, nine, and 11. Thank you. Completed last February around health-related issues. We had some findings on that. We'll be reporting those further and using those both in our study going forward, as well as assessing how we can continue to support students in unique ways. We also provided a brief overview to the board around our secondary study. Tonight's meetings, we'll have some recognitions that we'll be taking a look at, including retiring board members. We have some reports. A big report tonight, again, is on our tax levy that will be approved tonight for payable 2014. Margot Bach will be doing that, as well as the final look at our budget for 2013-14 that was originally approved in June. Consent agenda items, our personnel recommendations. We do have one Career to College Center Coordinator stipend. Pretty straightforward, the action items. Again, we'll then have the board taking action on the levy, the budget. We have some property liability insurance. The board heard of the course offerings for 1415 at the June, at the November meeting. Learning more about that, as well as an initiative that the state is requiring us to move forward on called World's Best Workforce and the plan we have around that. We have a variety of policies we'll be looking at. And that will wrap up our December meeting for 2013.
Thank you Superintendent Dressen. Next up, we have our fourth grade students here for recognition.
So I'm going to ask their teacher, Jamie Hawkinson, and their student teacher, Katie Pinto, as well as the students to come forward, please. So come on up. Run right up here by me, all the way up game. Here we go, we're looking right out in the audience. So how about if we, students, if you can give me your first name and last name, and then we'll go right down to your teacher and learn more about what you did.
My name is Safa Mohammed and...
That's it? You did great.
Monica Page.
John Talgata.
Nathan Half.
Ryan Chaffey.
So Katie, where, your student teaching, what college/university do you attend?
St. Thomas.
And tell us a little bit about your experience at Creek Valley and in fourth grade, and some of the highlights and some of those challenges that you just weren't quite ready for, but you're getting through.
Sure. Well, the highlights are standing right here behind you. I had a great semester of student teaching at Creek Valley. I was really lucky to get placed with Jamie, who introduced me as another teacher right off the bat from the first day. And I've learned more probably in the first month of student teaching than I learned in the last two years in graduate school. So I've loved it. It's been a great few months.
Well, great to have you. Thanks for being on our team. And you are completed at the end of the semester, though?
I'm completed today.
This is it? This is your last event? Well, let's congratulate you. And Jamie, tell us a little bit about this event that we have some wonderful new producers and video specialists.
Well, a lot of our staff knows and a lot of people in the community know how passionate I am for equity. Sit on the equity team for school and for the trainers. And so this all-for-all model has just been really important to me, as well as my students. And so when Dr. Dawkins had forwarded us an email about this Minnesota Department of Human Rights and this contest, I thought, oh goodness, this would be perfect for our classroom community. And we were really working on building a safe, respectful environment for our students. And we talk a lot about how we can better that in our classroom. And so this opportunity came up, and what a perfect way to commemorate such a special occasion and 50 years of the "I Have a Dream" speech. And because I had this fabulous student teacher with me this year, we really thought, hey, we can make the time to do this. And what a great opportunity for her to implement and work with me to make the lesson plans. And honestly, I mean, Katie did all of the video editing and all of the taping, the recording of it, and worked with the kids on what they were going to say. And, I mean, it all came to fruition, and the kids did a great job.
Fantastic. So let's talk a second. So what was some of the fun things that you did in creating this video as you look back on it?
Talking.
Talking about what?
"I Have a Dream" speech.
So what do you, when you think about "I Have a Dream" speech, what's kind of one of those things that you remember about that or that has been important?
Martin Luther King.
Okay. And how about the video? Was it tough to do? Did you enjoy it? Tell us a little bit of a highlight there.
Well, what you basically did was, we did our lines. They told us our lines, and we just had to say, "I have a dream," or what the dream was. And it kept saying, "I had a dream," and then it said what the dream was.
And when you found out that you guys had been selected as the winners, how did you feel about that?
Really happy.
Good, good. Well, I thank you all for coming today. And we're going to watch this little video piece if Katie can cue that up, and then we'll celebrate your success.
We have several spots.
"I have a dream that we can celebrate our friends' holidays."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that no one will have to be scared."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that different is good."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that everyone will feel respected."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that we will teach them."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that no one has to feel scared."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that I can ask my friends about their religion."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that I can learn about other cultures."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that I can have lots of friends that are different."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that I can ask questions."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that we are means different and not same."
"I have a dream."
"I have a dream that everyone will be respected."
"I have a dream."
Katie, thank you. Best wishes. Jamie, thank you for your leadership with that. And students, thanks for coming tonight. We now have some recognition from our girls' swimming and diving team. Coaches can't join us, but I'd ask the girls to please come forward and congratulate some of our first-place champions. The team, as a team, came in third place, but we had some individual champions that we want to recognize. And so, again, we can do the name and the different events that you participate in, and then we'll just take it right down the line.
Olivia Anderson and I participate in the 100 Brush Stroke.
And what grade are you in?
11.
Amelia Anderson and 50 Free, 100 Free, 200 Free Relay, and 400 Free Relay.
And grade?
11.
I think I got this figured out.
I'm Emma Whitmer. I'm in 11th grade, and I did the 50 Free, the 100 Free, the 200 Medley Relay, and the 200 Free Relay.
I'm Rachel Whitmer. I'm in 9th grade, and I was in the 50 Free, the 100 Free, the 200 Free Relay, and the 200 Medley Relay.
So we know that this isn't just something that you do in the fall. So how long have you been swimming? How long does, when does the season begin and end for you? How do you start keep improving so when you get those kind of times that you guys had as far as the championships? How does that all happen?
Well, I've been swimming for eight years, and it really never ends. It just keeps going all year, with a few weeks of a break here and there. And I guess we just try to work hard and practice and have fun to keep improving.
So favorite event?
50 Free.
Because?
It's short.
It's all about being short, is it?
Yep.
Okay. Talk a little bit about the feeling as you recognized that, you know, you had gotten to that section and you got to the, and you knew you had a shot at winning some of the state champion, or individual. Talk a little bit about the feeling when you recognized that you'd hit the wall first and were getting that gold medal.
Well, I was on the relay, so she was going last. And when, it was a close race, and when we saw that she finished, we were all really happy and excited, and yeah.
So was there ever a nervous point that you were not going to be that first one? Did you have the lead as getting in the last leg?
I think, was it even? I'm not really sure. Yeah, I think it was pretty even, and, I don't know, it was just a big adrenaline rush and like, you want to do well for the team, so.
About the team. Well, on behalf of the community, we want to congratulate you on all of your hard work and the commitment you have to giving your best and to being a team. And Chair Meyer's got some recognitions to provide you. Congratulations, thanks for coming. Lonnie Skretner is in her final phase of an amazing run of four years of service with the school district. And so how many years is this of working with the district? Because you weren't only a school board member, you were a teacher. So how many years does that make it?
21.
21 years. So what was the difference?
It's this district.
I understand. So what is the difference between a classroom teacher and a school board member? What's the same?
Wow. The same is that you're working for the kids, that you are doing what is best for learning. The difference is that this is a bigger picture. And this is more about money than the classroom ever was.
So Lonnie, when you look as far as advice, as a board member who's given time and talent, thoughts out to the community, to the staff, what are some comments you'd like to make?
Well, to the community, thank you, first. And secondly, to that community, to ask them to look for the teachers in their community and ask them to run for school board. I felt that a teacher's voice would be valuable to the board, and I feel even more strongly that way than I did when I ran. I asked skeptics what they would think of a hospital board that didn't have a doctor or a corporate board that didn't have a business person. And that teacher perspective at the table, I think, is enormously valuable. To teachers and administrators everywhere, and particularly to my colleagues here in this district and to the wonderful new teachers that I have not really gotten to know as well as I would like. This is a very tumultuous time in our society, and education is in the crosshairs. And I know how stressful that can be. I have a feeling how I would feel if I were still in a classroom. And I urge our teachers and our administrators to handle that stress, to be the risk-takers, to look at the long term, at the bigger picture, and to make the short-term sacrifices that can really change education. Because I think we all believe that public education is an absolute key to our society.
Lonnie, I know Chair Meyer has recognition. And Lonnie, while you were considered a board member for four years, and I would agree that you were, I don't think you ever, ever were anything but an educator or a teacher. And I think that's a true compliment to, you were always working on, focused on the students, but always had that teacher's heart. And I think we have benefited as a school district and as a community. So on behalf of 47,000 friends and neighbors, thank you, congratulations, and we wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Brian Hedberg. Mr. Hedberg.
Yes.
You stepped up at a very important time for our district because we were in some transition, and Adit Almag had resigned because she had relocated her as a person to another location and wasn't part of the district anymore. So we were looking for that seventh board member because it's important to have that player there. And you said yes. So why?
Because he's crazy. I have no idea. Well, I think it's all about giving back to the community. And I had about eight years as a school board member before. Enjoyed that time, a lot of great relationships, and I think we did a lot of good work together. And when it was an opportunity to help out again, I didn't stop to hesitate to think. It was just all about helping the community again.
So was it like riding a bike? Was there anything different from that little gap that you had in those four years of that?
A little bit like Groundhog's Day, the movie. Revisited, but no, it was very, it was very interesting and engaging, and a lot has changed. I think the district has moved ahead in many different ways. They're very positive. We got a great staff, and the board was always very supportive as well. So it was very easy for me to come in and be an effective board member.
Well, Brian, again, on behalf of the community, all 47,000 that know you as a great person, we do want to thank you. Yeah, we do want to thank you for your commitment back, again. But you've always been very close to, even after you retired from the board, you were still very involved in the community and very involved in our school district, so you were able to step in very nicely. But we really do appreciate your extra efforts these past six months, and the difference you've made in helping us advance the mission of all-for-all. So congratulations.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yep.
Next up, we're on to our report and tax levy.
We should also recognize that Adit Almag did receive her plaque at an event earlier for her years of service. And we congratulate her and wish her well. Adit still comes back in the community often, and so we will probably continue to see plenty of her as well. But this time, we welcome Margot Bach, who will give us an overview of a couple of reports. Margot, I'm going to let you just take over here, taking a look at both the tax levy as well as our 2013-14 budget.
Good evening. Just wouldn't be a good send-off for board members that are leaving the board without a truth and taxation hearing, now would it?
It's what we live for.
The levy certification or truth and taxation hearing is required in our December meeting, as part of our December meeting, to go through the tax impact of the upcoming levy certification, provide an opportunity for public feedback, and then also to discuss the final budget for the current year. And so long-range planning, but specifically, the requirement states discussing the budget also. So we'll quickly go through the levy calendar, some basics in levy funding, and factors contributing to our change this year, and a quick budget, or a budget summary. I promise it'll be quick. Levy calendar, we certified the proposed levy in September, and now we will certify the final tax levy here in December. That affects homeowners or property owners, businesses, et cetera, their taxes for 2014. And it's also the kickoff then, or the start to our 1415 budget planning because it funds our 1415 school year. Our authorized revenue is determined primarily, in most cases, through the number of students that we have. And then there's a variety of state formulas that determine the local property tax portion that is paid, and then the state aid. Oftentimes taxpayers will contact me or ask, well, if the taxes went up, you must be getting more money. And in some cases, that's true, in the case of enrollment growth or a voter-approved levy referendum. But in other cases, it's not new money to us. It's that number of students times authorized dollar amount, and it's the distribution between how much the state is paying and how much the local taxpayers are paying. So it kind of depends on the state formula. We do not have the authority to arbitrarily just set a tax levy. Our tax levies are either voter-approved or set by the state legislature in terms of a formula that we have access to to approve. These next two charts are just a historical graph or charting of our local property value or local property wealth. And we have done, fared very, very well in the most recent years in terms of the economy. So you can see the average is there. Those dollar values do impact our tax levies, so as you see them go up or down, they, all other things equal, they do impact our levy certification. So factors that can impact tax change would be state-level decisions. And there certainly, with all the formula changes this year, there were some changes in also levy formulas this year, so that certainly has happened this year. Issues determined by district voters. We did not have a bond referendum or an operating referendum this year, so that is not a part of our levy certification. And local factors that can be on your local real estate market, individual property owners. Was there an addition or an increase in value of some sort, and classifications? Or the surrounding community, increase in value in the surrounding community. What's included in this levy certification, voter-approved, as we talked about, and there's levies that are set by state formula, operating capital, community services, and a variety of others. And then other areas that are based on local need that we have in the district. We are able to levy for those based on the legislature giving us authority. However, we do have to submit to the state, get Minnesota Department of Ed approval that we do have a need, and we are spending those dollars in the way the legislature intended. And here are just a few examples, such as health and safety, extended day disabled, deferred maintenance, are just a few areas in that other category. Voter-approved is the majority of our levies, 61%. That is down slightly just because of the legislative change with what we call location equity revenue, where there was a shift then between the voter-approved and the local levy. But overall, very similar to last year. So this year's changes in terms of the legislative session were the local equity revenue, which was a change between voter-approved and other. There's a student achievement, or what used to be termed the old general ed levy that was partially restored. Referendum and equalization formula changes, also tied with the location equity revenue. And then operating capital levy formula changed, where the state aid was increased and the local levy portion was reduced. And that would be a great example of that first chart I showed, where sometimes the overall revenue for the district stays the same. In this case, the local tax impact went down and state aid went up. All-day, everyday kindergarten, we increased pupil units there based on the board approval of offering all-day, everyday kindergarten program for the 1415 school year. We also increased the lease levy portion for the additional two classrooms that we have going on at Concord and Cornelia, to be able to provide that option at all school sites. Also, we have a little bit of enrollment growth and some prior year adjustments. So here's a history on our levy certification. At the top section, you'll see the major voter-approved levies and then the other levies listed. And you can, in looking at a history like this, you can see the areas, particularly the location equity and student achievement, where legislatively there are changes that happen in given years where we might not have had a levy before, and now we do. Or the reverse, where we used to have a levy and it's no longer in place. The overall levy increase is just about 2.3%. Part of that is due to the addition of adding all-day, everyday kindergarten, which is a slight change from having half-day program, and also adding the two classrooms for that. If we took that portion of the increase out, we'd be just around a 1% increase, and the state average is about a 1.6% increase. Here's just another way of looking at our levy certification analysis by fund and a history there. Also, a history and the change in our property taxes, broken out between homestead, commercial, and farm. The estimated annual tax impact on the variety of, the variety of home values listed of this proposed levy certification. Our average home value is around $400,000 to $450,000, which would be an increase of about $19 per year. That assumes no increase in an individual property owner's property value. If the property value went up or down, then it changes those estimates. Here is a comparison with other districts on a $400,000 home on the school taxes by, for those districts. You can see all of us are, that we measure ourselves, again, are very, very close or very similar in our overall tax impact. Then we're also required to talk about budget, which I'll have more detailed conversation in a little bit here. But this is just a quick summary where we have the 2012-13 audit that is in. We have the 1314 budget, and, which I'll talk more about in a minute, and estimated 2014-15, which incorporates this tax levy. And I see somehow my blue lines that are supposed to line up are shifted a little bit to the right, but we'll get that corrected before it goes out on the website. So before I proceed on to budget, I'd like to pause on just tax levy certification and ask if there's any questions.
Hey, Margot, there were really no changes since the September.
Correct. There were no changes since September, and we did discuss it at Finance and Facilities Committee last week, and they recommended it for approval. Do we have any community questions? I can't see behind me, but since we are supposed to...
Additional questions? Anybody? Just running the financial report.
Move on to budget. So the 2013-14 final budget, the preliminary budget was approved in June. We have updated the budget information for fall enrollment, new hires in staff, people that have retired or resigned, any changes that the board has approved along the way. Here's our budget calendar, but we are to that point where we approve the final budget in December for the year that we are in. Enrollment, we continue to have slow growth and between probably a quarter percent to a percent a year. We have updated that, like I said, for fall enrollment projections. We were slightly down from the June projections, which is incorporated in there. Our revenue assumptions have been updated for the enrollment. We also had some other local revenues that went up slightly. We also reviewed the audit information with the final audit report and took a look at some of the local revenues, and there were a couple that we could increase slightly. Expenditures, we have put in the fall 2013 enhancements that the board just approved at the last board meeting in November. The majority of those here listed were in the... The majority of those here listed were in the, in the June budget. Health insurance has been updated for the approved premium changes, both with the district plan and with the teachers' plan, both of which came in lower than budgeted. So we were able to make that update, which helped, helped offset being off slightly in the enrollment projections. Here's a revenue and budget history by fund. And then a general fund history where the revenues are listed by various category and the expenditures also by categories. And then our enrollment and unassigned fund balance as a percentage, just to provide a quick summary and a quick history. We receive the majority of our money from the state, just under 70 percent. We spend our dollars. We are service-oriented, providing services to students. So 82 percent of our budget comes from staff and providing that service to students. Of that staff, of that 82 percent, then here's how the staffing breaks out. As you expect, the majority would be teaching staff directly in the classroom with students, 15 percent clerical, custodial, drivers, paraprofessionals then, and administration and severance. We also look at expenditures in a different way versus salary and benefits and supplies and those kind, that kind of a breakdown. Instruction, instructional support, district support, site buildings and equipment. And if you combine instruction and instruction for special ed programs, direct instruction and support services to students, 80 percent of our budget is spent in direct instruction to students or support services to students. And I think that is a very strong statement for where we're aligning our dollars in our budget process, directly to the students or in support of them. We'll skip by these. And then what I would encourage you to do, that's the PowerPoint, but also we will, we have in the board documents, is a detailed budget document that provides a narrative analysis for, on the budget, what changed, what went up, up or down from the previous year, what the assumptions are for each of the funds. That's a great place just to get a quick summary of what's changing within the district. Then there's some summary financial statements. The one that every, the finance committee is used to looking at is page 14. It gives all the funds, the beginning fund balances, revenues and expenditures, and the ending fund balances. Page 14 and 15 of the budget document. Then 16 through 27 all provide a five-year history for the various funds, four years of actual data, and then this current year budget where you can see revenues and expenditures and impact to fund balance. And I won't go through each of those pages for you. I just reference those so that you know that they're there. We are in good position as projected June 30, 2014. Our fund balance will be slightly above board policy, but that was part of the plan as we reduced last spring in 1314 to help 1415. If we reduce some, it compoundingly had a positive impact on our long-range projection. There's also informational, more detailed information from our finance system in the other part of the budget document, if somebody really wants to get a little bit more detailed on the district finances. So just know that that is in your board materials. It'll also, after approval, be posted out on the district website. So if you ever have any questions, let me know. And I'll ask quickly if there's any questions on the budget document. And if not, I will move into the long-range plan because the approval of the tax levy or the tax levy certification and the final budget then leads us into our budget planning for 1415. So any questions on 1314 final budget? So just a quick review on the legislative summary for 1415. I won't go through each of these items, but we did have many changes, as you recall, in the legislative session from a funding standpoint. Some were aid, some were local levy, some were our pupil unit accounting. We did overall get a percent and a half increase in the formula from the state.
Can I stop you for a second there and go back to that slide? For the community, I think it's important for them, if they're watching this or if they go to this on the website, to notice, all the publicity that's been in the media has been on, the state is funding full-day kindergarten, and isn't that great? And it is great. But you look and the fact is, you know, they took a part-time kindergartner down to .55. They lowered the ratio at one to three, at four to six, and at seven to 12. And so, you know, they moved some dollars around in order to fund all-day K. So all of that is not truly new money. And I think it's important for people to understand that.
The true new money is the percent and a half or the $80 increase on the formula. The rest, there were formula changes, you're absolutely right, but that was neutral, a neutral impact to the district. Variety of other changes, and we talked about some in the levy. There will be some special education funding changes on 1314 and 1415. They're being referred to as more of transitional changes. There's going to be some larger funding changes in 1516 in special ed. And the interim changes are to get us to that point. I don't have a lot of detail yet on the 1516 changes. Plenty, we have some time to work through those yet. This is just a chart that shows the, the net formula and the comparison with CPI over the, and when I refer to net basic formula, it takes out when we've, similarly to what Lonnie was referring to earlier, when changes in formula, funding formula happen, but it's neutral to the district, this chart takes those, that amount out and compares it to CPI. Long-range financial planning parameters. So I've taken the 1314 budget, the audit from last year, the levy information for 1415, the addition of all-day, everyday kindergarten enrollment, made some projections for 1516 and beyond. Right now, in the base plan, planning 0 percent in funding, not sure what that will be into the future. Planning for formula changes in special education, additional expenses for all-day, everyday kindergarten, to have that incorporating in, to include the lease levy payments for the two classrooms. And with that, we come to our chart that Finance and Facilities Committee fondly refers to as Lenny's chart.
Lenny's, thank you.
Yes. And first of all, it, again, I've mentioned it before, that the history of this district and the financial stability and the commitment of the board to financial excellence and educational excellence is admirable. And, and you don't see that in, in all districts. And so that's important to know. Looking at our estimated 201314, we, we're continuing to maintain between that eight to 10 percent range. We do have a 6 to 12 percent fund balance range, minimum of six, plus the 2 percent cash flow, which is the blue dotted line there. So we want 8 percent for sure. We tend to stay around the eight to 10 percent range. Everything that's projected in those base assumptions on the long-range plan, if you look at the estimated 201415, the base plan is the red line. It would lower our fund balance a little bit, but we still would be just slightly above or about right on that 8 percent level, which is about where we would like to be. And then because the assumptions have 0 percent increase in state aid and some assumptions for expenditure increases, you would expect that the trajectory would start to go downward. So a couple of the variations there, just to look at, show that what if we reduce 500,000 in both 1415 and 1516? What does that look like? That's the green line. What if we had a funding increase in 1516 of 1 percent? And what if we also reduce the 500,000 two years in a row? So you can see how it, any of those changes, changes the trajectory of where we're going out into the future. And that's what we looked at a year ago and have looked at in previous years of what decisions we can make in the upcoming year that help that long-term, term look. And so this is just a start to the conversation for the 1415 planning year. Part of the process will be to update for, after the start of school resumes in January, will be the January enrollment projections. We'll have about a half-year worth of student data. We'll also have our demographic study coming in. So we will, I will update this one more time. This is just an update of where we were, we're at historically, kind of picking those key pieces on the revenue and expense side to add to our, our history or our story in terms of where we've been financially. And if you recall, I'll bring up this chart. We initially, before we made decisions in the spring regarding our budget, this was our trajectory. And the impact of making some adjustments in 1314 did have an impact on where we are in 1415 and a positive impact on that, as you can see from this chart. So I just wanted to bring us back to where we were in the spring and approval in June and showing the impact of those decisions and how it is helping the projections for And again, the next steps are to update the long-range plan for one final adjustment or enrollment update in January. We are going to try and accelerate the budget process this year to have information being worked on in January and February, processed in March with, I know a break falls in there, but approval either by the end of March or very, very beginning of April, so that we have those, those parameters to work from. And then we also are able to notify staff. We know in terms of hiring, what, if we're adding something or reducing, that we, we have all the information to process throughout the spring. Questions on anything from tonight?
Quiet group.
We did see this in Finance and Facilities and it looks, looks at least better than we had maybe hoped at one point, but I think it'll be good for next year and help us to move our planning forward.
Additional questions or comments?
Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Burning the midnight oil.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margot.
And your team.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. I really want to thank Jim Gilligan. He helped a lot with the final budget.
Yeah, as a side note, I was dropping off my son at a game at seven o'clock. He was walking out. Said, Jim, it's time to go home.
All that budget detail you see in your board report? Yeah, that was Jim's work.
It's helpful. I, the graphs, the explanations, very helpful.
Appreciate it.
Five little picky questions. I should call Jim and not you.
Next up, we're on to our consent agenda. Can I add a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve our consent agenda. Rick, could you please walk us through that?
Certainly. We have personnel recommendations. Great. My clicker's not working here. Anyhow.
There it is.
There it is. Okay. Not really. So the consent agenda includes expenditures, again, a stipend for a career and college, college and career center coordinator that has been set into the budget, but we just needed to get the, there it is. The official approval. We have some commendations from students and staff that we recognize early today, as well as our retiring board members. We do ask the board to approve the orchestra trip. Earlier, they had planned to go to Thailand and due to some unrest that's occurring in that country, we were able to work with our travel agent, no loss of money to the students. We have some contacts in Hong Kong. And so we've moved that trip to Hong Kong. And then we have some gifts, gifts that once again, our community is sharing so graciously with us. And that would conclude the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Rick. Any addition, any items that anyone would like to remove or discuss in the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent agenda is approved. The next item is our first action item, the final levy for 2000 payable 2014. We just saw a presentation on that. Can I add a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the final tax levy for 2013 payable 2014, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have the 2013-2014 final budget. Can I add a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the 201314 final budget, which we also saw a presentation on a short time ago. Any discussion? Questions, comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our product liability insurance. Can I add a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our product liability insurance.
Property liability.
Property liability insurance. Margot, any background?
We solicited bids from eight companies. We did have two bid. The recommendation is to continue with the existing company that the district has had for a year, WRM, with an increase of 3.9 percent, about a percent and a half, slightly under a percent and a half. That increase is due to property value increase. And we were pleased to see a minimal increase considering the market and also that the district has three claims that are still in our claim history that are particularly, one is a sizable claim that, to see this below double digits is a good thing. And it has been reviewed by Finance and Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Margot. How far do they go back in claim history?
They'll go back five years, so maybe a couple of years yet.
Additional questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the property liability insurance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our course offering changes at Edina High School. We did see these previously. Can I add a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Quick little background, Randy?
Sure. The course, the proposed course changes involve dropping a particular course from Project Lead the Way called Intro to Engineering Design Women in Engineering. It has not been a viable course for the last three years. We've had about two to three students per year sign up for it. So our practice has been to remove those courses from our existing course catalog if they haven't run for three years. We have a couple of course description changes, AP Computer Science, aligning it with the Engineering and Technology Department, moving it from the Math Department, making it a little bit easier for students to find. Also, it has a new prerequisite which aligns with better preparation for the AP test. And then some other course description changes in Chinese 1, 2, and 3, which better align to the instructional objectives and textbook resources for that course, and then also prerequisite change for that course. One course name change from concert orchestra to varsity orchestra. That's the same naming convention that band uses, so trying to be more consistent in the naming of our courses there. And then the last one is, we started offering Chinese, I believe, in 2009. And we have had students take Chinese 1, Chinese 2, Chinese 3, and now they're looking for Chinese 4. So we are asking to move ahead with offering Chinese 4 next year. We're predicting somewhere between 35 and 40 students to sign up for the course.
Were there any changes in any of these proposals from last month when we saw them?
No changes.
Your projections for the Chinese 4, 35 to 40, that's going to be a conundrum, isn't it, in terms of class size?
Yeah, it's right at that line of one or two sections. So that's a challenge for our high school administration to figure out.
Additional questions, comments? Thank you, Randy. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the course offering changes at the high school for 1415, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Posed, motion carries. Next up, we have the World's Best Workforce District Plan. Can I add a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This was a new state statute that was approved right at the end of the legislative session last spring. What the intent was, was for the state, including Department of Education, to bring all their different reports under one umbrella. And so while it's called the World's Best Workforce, it really is an alignment effort, from my opinion. There are some things that were really trying to drive us more to a career college look, but the state has a variety of reports that they're really trying to consolidate and bring it together. They're also requiring that some of the district planning documents come together, and so they're really encouraging districts that don't have strategic plans and don't have measurements of how to measure that progress in the strategic work that they're doing, that they would have to move that forward. There is a substantial checklist with this, so again, it's... Well, the plan itself looks pretty straightforward. In the timelines, there is a lot of background work. MDE is still working the details. There's some talk in the legislative session that this might be modified in 2014 as well, but we do feel we have a good plan in place. We've been working with Teamworks International, a consulting firm, to make sure that we hit all these requirements. Probably one of the things that we do want to also draw your attention to is, as we look to the future with our balanced scorecard or how we're going to measure our strategic plan, we are looking at one of the key measurements being our ACT scores. Historically, we've always used that state MCA test or the state assessment, and while that still will be a tool that we can use, we really want the driving force to be that ACT score because we think that that's the more consistent one for us. It's also one that will allow us to benchmark, not only with state schools, but also at a national level. And so we're pursuing that, and as we continue to roll our strategic work forward and the balanced scorecard, we'll be using it based on that ACT score, which we can also... And Randy can maybe talk more about this, but we can also use that and some of our other assessment scores to create an alignment so that we really can see how students back in the elementary grades are able to see how they're progressing towards some of the targets that we have with ACT. But that's all wrapped up into this initiative that we do need to take action on to meet state requirements.
Discussion, questions? Anything to add, Randy?
Well, just the... An assessment like the ACT offers many alignment advantages for us. There are other assessments aligned to the ACT, of course, with Explore, Plan, and ACT, and so that data gives us good predictive information of the percent of our students on the pathway to college and career readiness and success. So in using that data, that helps us meet the requirements for this workforce plan.
Thank you, Randy. Additional questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the motion for the World's Best Workforce District Plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Our last item on tonight's action portion of the meeting is a scheduled review of Policy 811 Buildings and Sites Environmental Resource Management. Can I add a motion, please?
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. We have seen this before. Any discussion?
There are no changes since we last looked at it.
Questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the motion for Buildings and Sites, Policy 811 Environmental Resource Management, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you all for your work. We're on the discussion, scheduled review of policies. We're starting out at 429. Personal shared contract. Who'd like to go?
Well, if I could discuss generality between all three of the policies under discussion for 429, 509, and 617, these are coming forward in reference to language that may need to be adjusted because of the move to full-day kindergarten. So if half-day kindergarten is not a formal option on our schedule, it adjusts the language in the policy. So the language changes that you see are basically with that in mind. These policies, some you will notice we reviewed fairly recently, they're all going to come back again on their regular cycle as we review 400, 500, and 600 series.
They just needed to be updated timely recently.
Correct. Language needed to be updated for our current change.
I just had one stylistic question on the 509, this resident enrollment and assignment, and I know when we go through our policies, our convention is, rather than saying Edina School District, we're going to say Edina Public Schools. But in this particular policy, we're talking about where students reside, so we're saying we have sentenced it, setting for students who are residents of the Edina Public Schools, rather than the district. So the language sounds inappropriate, and there's like six or seven times where I think it was just going through and finding those instances and changing them, and I think for most of them, they probably have to be changed back because we're talking about specific residency areas.
So, thank you. We'll add that to discussion when we meet again.
Additional comments or questions regarding these policies? That's it for discussion?
Well, there is.
Additional information, announcements?
Just remind the board that the board's tradition of sending out a letter of appreciation to staff, we'll be working through our communication department on that, and we'll let the board make sure they get a glance at that, but that's this week. We are at a point also in our... We talked about the policy committee of just updating our whole policy review process. Now that we've kind of been through it, we may be extending that to a fourth year and then spending more time on some select policies as it gets back to our strategic plan because we'll probably be doing some policy development work. 2014 is going to be a busy year as we really step up our strategic work in next generation. We'll be sharing quite a bit of information with the community early on around that. And then finally, we want to extend our happy birthday to the city of Edina, and they celebrate 125 years. And if you haven't taken a look at this on current, and we thank Lisa and her team for putting that document, a great document. It was a great story about some of the old days of what it was like to be on the school board, and it's no longer that way, obviously, but it's a great story of the history of Edina schools along with the city of Edina. And it was a wonderful event last week, and I thank the city for that celebration, and it's worth a read.
It's a wonderful picture of students in front of the schoolhouse, but they all had the saddest little faces. I'm so glad on our website, all our students look a lot happier.
Well, but you have to realize, Kathy, that was in a time when you had to stay totally still for the camera, so they didn't say smile. Because if you smiled, that was going to move and your face would be out of focus.
That's why Donny smiles in old pictures. She's great.
There you go.
You were constantly learning something.
What a place. You're going to miss this, Brian. I am. I am. But I'm going to watch you. I'm going to be part of the 20 percent that watch the board.
But you could attend meetings too, Brian.
Or the 33 percent that show up.
For those in the audience, we saw statistics during our workshop that we had questions about because there was a rather high percentage of folks who said they attended a board meeting, and we kept saying, "Okay, which chair were they hiding under?" And then a fairly high percentage who said they watched board meetings. Now those may be true.
Either way, it's helpful. Have the community engagement.
Yes.
And I just thought we should say, we hope that everybody enjoys the winter break, their kids and their families, and rejuvenate and ready for the next half of the school year.
That's it. The other additional items? Accept the motion to adjourn from either Brian or Lonnie?
And the other one will have to second it.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Moved by Brian, seconded by Lonnie to adjourn. Any objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.